Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And with that, I can just ask Kim to call roll, please.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Ms. Quetch?
Here.
Let the record be like, Ms. Pilianna Zappson, Vice Mayor Austin.
Present.
And Mayor Anderson.
Here. With that, Derek Webb, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, among God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if I could ask everyone to please rise, we are now going to say a prayer, and that prayer will be led by Brooke Bennor from the Bond Church. If everyone will please stand.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, your word says, blessed is the man who does not walk in the counsel of the wicked, nor stand in the path of sinners, nor sit in the seat of scoffers, but his delight is in the law of the Lord, and in his law he meditates day and night. Help each of us to hope only in your word and not in the things of this world. Fill us with the knowledge of your will, Lord, and all spiritual wisdom and understanding, so that we will walk in a manner worthy of you, to please you in all respects, bearing fruit in every good work, and increasing in our knowledge of who you are. Strengthen us with all power according to your glorious might, for the attaining of all steadfastness and patience, joyously giving thanks to you, who alone can save us. I ask, Lord, that we would all read your word and apply it to our lives as we seek to love our neighbors and to serve this town that you have placed us in. It's in Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
I know everyone's had a moment to look over the agenda. If I could get a motion to approve the tonight's agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin?
Aye.
And Mayor Anderson.
Aye. And if I could, we have the approval of last month's meeting on February the 3rd. Note that there was a typographical error that has been corrected, and we have been presented with the correct moments. If I could get someone to make a motion to approve the minutes from February the 3rd.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Any discussion? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin?
Aye.
And Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Now, we're going to move on to public comments, and I see we have two people signed up for public comments. During public comments, this is the opportunity for citizens to address the town council. Please approach the podium when called, state your first and last name, and provide your complete mailing address. Rachel Sheffy, if you'll come forward, please.
Yes, my name is Rachel Sheffy, 211 Madison Street, Avenue, Virginia, 24210. And the concern I have, I just spoke with the chief and everything in regards to some activity within our neighborhood, on King's Mountain Drive, and also another concern I have, like when we have, like, snow and stuff. I know the town is right below us, and I know they have to clean the main roads as well, but sometimes if they can do a little bit better of cleaning our roads up top there, that would help a lot there to get people to work.
Yes, ma'am.
And everything there, and I know you've gotten some streets fixed for us. Dwayne, just want to know if we can get those patched up just a little better.
Yes, ma'am.
And then just get it looking back good like it used to.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all we need.
Thank you, Rachel. We have one other person signed up for public comments. That will be Angie Jordan. If you'll come forward, please. If you'll state your first and last name.
Angela Jordan.
And your mailing address.
309 Hickman Street, in Avenue, Virginia, 24210. My main concern is, I have somebody looking at my wind at night, flashing lights. That's about it with me, but other than that, I don't have no more concerns, you know, and everything is looking okay. As far as I know, but that's what I have.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we have anyone else that has signed up for public comment. We'll move right on to proclamations, and we have one proclamation this evening, and that's going to be a proclamation recognizing March 2025 as Multiple Sclerosis Education and Awareness Month. And Derek Webb will be reading that proclamation, and we will be presenting that to Ms. Gail Butler. Derek?
This is a proclamation for Multiple Sclerosis Education and Awareness Month for March 2025. Whereas multiple sclerosis, MS, is unpredictable, often disabling disease of the central nervous system that damages the myelin sheath that surrounds and protects nerve cells, and whereas this damage slows down or blocks messages between the brain and body, leading to symptoms of MS, including visual disturbances, muscle weakness, trouble with coordination and balance, thinking and memory problems, and sensations such as numbness, prickling. And whereas, experts estimate that there are nearly 1 million people in the United States diagnosed with MS, and twice as many women than men are affected by MS, and whereas, MS can be mild or can cause individuals to lose their ability to write, speak, or walk. And whereas, most individuals experience their first symptoms of MS between the ages of 20 and 50. And whereas, the exact cause of MS is unknown, and there is no cure, but there are treatments for initial attacks, medications, and therapies to improve symptoms, and recently developed drugs to slow the worsening of the disease. And whereas, the MS Alliance of Virginia, MSAV, provides programs and services for anyone in Virginia whose life has been affected by MS, and whereas, through education, assistance to support groups, special programs and events, and the dissemination of information, the MSAV provides a better-informed general population and the means to improve the quality of life for those in Virginia with MS. And whereas, the MSAV is a 100% volunteer organization formed to fill the needs of support groups and provide educational programs, activities, and events, and help others start upbeat groups within their communities. And whereas, raising public awareness of MS will lead to increased support and services for families in the Commonwealth of Virginia impacted by the disease. Now, therefore, Mayor Dwayne Anderson recognizes March 2025 as Multiple Sclerosis Education and Awareness Month in the town of Abingdon, and he calls this observance to the attention of all citizens. Signed, Mayor Dwayne Anderson.
We'd like to present that, too. I don't want to drag him down, so I just go the other way. Kingsville Road.
If you know anybody that has MS, or if you have MS yourself, we have a great group. I guess that's, you know, we do a lot of different things. We have speakers, a lot of educational speakers and different things. But everybody's welcome. If you're a caretaker and you're caretaking for somebody, it might not be MS, it could be Parkinson's or something like that. We would welcome you also, because I'm a caretaker and I need to go to those meetings.
Thank you.
I just looked at that, that's very young, and also, we're here in place, that he is also issuing a proclamation for the state to recognize MS as a awareness.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. With that being said, we have one person signed up for a public hearing, and that's going to be Gabe Cristofani. That public hearing is going to be based on the proposal of the major subdivision approval of the repli- repli of Lot 2, Plat Book 88, Page 93, Town Center of Abingdon LLC, parcel number 020-12-5. Gabe, if you'll please come forward.
Evening. Gabe Cristofani, Town of Abingdon. So, we had a request for a major subdivision come before the planning commission at their last meeting, and so I'm just here to give you the information of what was presented to them and their vote. So, Town Center of Abingdon LLC, owner slash applicant, and Appalachia Design Services representative have requested approval of a final plat for a major subdivision located at parcel 020-12-5, and this was the evident town center parcel where the old Food City is and those smaller stores. Some background, there's multiple small businesses there. There's the old Food City, Little Caesar's, there's a Cato, and various other kind of small businesses there. Typically with major subdivisions, we would want to see additional infrastructure such as streets, access, other improvements such as water lines, sewer, stormwater, streetlights. That's already all there. It's already developed. The point of this major subdivision is they're turning one parcel into three. That's what makes it a major subdivision when it's more than two, when you're turning one into anything more than two. So, that's why they had to go through this process. They're really just changing where the lines are. They're not proposing any new development, no new buildings at this time. If and when there is a building built, or if there's some sort of improvements, they would have to adhere to parking standards, the parking outlines, all that kind of stuff that comes with it. But for this, they're just looking to change the boundary lines into, from one to three. And so, the planning commission voted unanimously to approve it, with the exception, we had one absent at that meeting. Other than that, there wasn't too many questions. So, if you have any questions for me, more than happy to answer. If not, the applicant is here if you have any questions about it.
Does anyone have any questions for?
Kim, do I need to recuse myself?
Probably not technically, but you might as well.
That's a lawyer answer.
Definitely a lawyer answer.
That's the most conservative answer. You can't get in trouble if you don't.
All right. That being said, does anyone have anything that they would like to talk about on the public hearing? If not, we will close the public hearing. Yes, ma'am. If you'll step forward, please. State your name, please, and your address when you come forward.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Rachel Sheffy, 211 Madison Street, Avenue, Virginia. My question is, with so many people being homeless, or, you know, a lot of school kids that we don't know, don't have anywhere to stay, will we get any type of program or something set up for housing? Or say, like, there's something that was to happen, and an elderly person didn't have nowhere to go on just a weekend? Would that ever consider?
Is this related to the public hearing?
I don't think this is related to the public hearing.
Oh, that's, oh, sorry.
Yeah, that was.
Oh, for that, that right there, that's, oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
I can get with you to the meeting if you want to hang around.
Okay. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
With that being said, we will close the public hearing. That's all right? Tonight, I don't think we have any resolutions. I don't think we have any first reading of orders or any second readings of orders. We'll move on down to consideration of bids, and we have one person signed up with consideration of bids. And that consideration of bids is for the award for the wayfinding signage construction. If I could get Matt Henderson to come forward, please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. How are y'all?
All right. How are we doing today, Matt?
Good.
Great.
So, we put the wayfinding sign back out for bidding. This time, actually, we got three contractors, or six contractors instead of three. So, the winning bid come in at, so, let me start, let me back up. So, instead of doing the whole turnkey of the whole wayfinding signage, we done sections B, C, and D, which this is downtown here, from the historic district coming back this way. Parking signs, some street signs, got some small trailblazer signs. So, and then we did two add alternates. One is gateway signage, and then the other one is kiosk sign. So, the bid come in at $177,900 to do sections B, C, and D. So, I also had them break it down, sign price, labor price, turnkey price. And then, the gateway signs come in at $69,237 apiece, and the kiosk sign come in at $24,925 apiece. So, my proposal is, is that we move forward with this K and M printing at the 177.9. But what we're going to do is, we're going to take the labor out for sections B, C, and D, which comes out to $39,130. So, then that means with us doing one gateway sign and one kiosk sign, and they supplying the material for sections B, C, and D, then we would be at a total of $232,932.50.
Yeah, and then the labor on the part that we're doing ourselves, the majority of those are just single pole signs, not really elaborate signs. The ones that are more detailed, like the gateway sign is like a small house. So, they'll be building that on site, but that's not our folks.
Yes.
And then they'll also allow us to purchase, if we want to buy or expand the zones or expand the signage, we can purchase the same signs for them for up to five years. We'll always have the specs for it, but that way we'll have, we can pay as we go essentially if we need to. But yeah, this was the most efficient way to get it at the place we wanted to be at.
Just approximately, what do you believe the percentage of the total number of signs that we first looked at in B, C, and D, what percentage of the total would those be?
Compared to the?
Compared to total?
Compared to the total of signage, that's, we're probably.
And that may be another fair question to ask, and I understand.
And I, well, and then, far as actual total percentage, I don't really know that.
Right.
I don't know right offhand, because these are some smaller signs. In the other sections, you've got your larger trailblazer signs. They may not, it may only be one sign, but it's, you know, significantly larger than the smaller trailblazers and the parking signs. So, but it's within that 25 to 30% of the whole thing, I think, so.
This amount represents 25 to 30%?
25 to 35% maybe, somewhere in that ballpark. And that's just guessing.
I got you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No.
As you say, it covers the majority of the main touristy areas, but it doesn't cover, like, when you go.
So, we're not going to cover, like, coming in at 19, 17, 14, and then, so it won't cover those areas. Yeah. But from the bids that we got the last time, and then we broke everything down.
Yes.
We tried, we knew what kind of dollar amount we needed to work with, so then we went back through and broke everything down trying to get pretty close to that amount, so then that's what we decided to put out this time. So, you know, hopefully, we can get this done in about two to three years, so. And in budgeting about the same amount of what we're doing now, so.
Have we worked with this company before?
No, we haven't. They got good references. They supplied good references, and they supplied, you know, pictures of places that they put the other wayfinding signage up.
Previous work that they've done?
Yep.
And that was okay with you?
Yeah, I like, yeah, it looked good.
Efficient to you?
Yes.
Gotcha. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Henderson? Would anybody like to make a motion on this consideration of awards for the wayfinding signage construction?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Let us look at this, just for memory.
Let me give it just a moment, please.
Just so I understood, this, y'all felt good about this bid, right?
Yes.
Y'all felt good about the contractor and so on and so forth? Okay. That's really what I was after.
Donna, is there something you need to ask Mr. Henderson?
Well, I think when we discussed this before, we were sort of leaning toward the middle person.
Yes.
And I'm just thinking, why did that change? But I guess it's because of the bid.
It's because of about a, well, it's because of about a $50,000 savings.
Yes, he, on the most recent bid sheet, he increased the price of the individual poles to some, close to $10,000, and basically reduced the labor. But with us doing the labor, we saved a whole lot more. That's why we couldn't go that part we had looked at before.
Okay.
So, yeah. Yeah, because it's built out, it's in your packet, but it's, well, it's really small print. But basically, so like, the one that we're looking at right now is 74, 75 for one sign, and that other group was at $11,407 for the same sign. And then, this one was at $4,700 for labor. The other one's at $1,200 for labor, but we're doing the labor. So, doing this route, this was the most efficient way to, or the most effective way to get the most out of our money.
Correct. But have we used these people before?
No, we had not.
I asked him, I don't think that they've used these people before, but he is, you said you referenced some of their work?
Yeah, I mean, looking at the packet that they put together and, you know, checking some of the references, everybody seemed pleased, so.
They're out of Maryland, I think, but it's not too terribly far.
They're what?
They're out of Maryland, I believe.
Yes, yes.
Dwayne, do you have any questions for him?
No, I don't. I was just astonished the last time at how much the signage was and how much over what we initially looked at in terms of a budget for it.
Yes.
And that's why I was asking the percentage. I was just wondering if.
And I'm just estimating that 25 to 30%, that's going based off of the bids that we put out prior.
Yes.
The turnkey thing, you know, which we had one at like 1.1 million, one at eight, and one at just, or just, is like six, almost 700,000. So, if we're going to be at the 232 mark for this, and then, you know, there may be some cost savings down the road for some signage that we can do, but three years, at budgeting $250,000 to $300,000, we ought to, we should be able to complete the wayfinding signage program, so. But, you know, once you get outside of this section B, C, and D, you have larger trailblazer signs at 16, 18 foot tall. So, you know, those are going to have to be constructed by the individual that gets that bid, so.
Right.
And those can be expensive.
That's, that was what I was sitting here thinking about.
Yeah, yeah, they're, yeah, I went over to Whitfield to check their signs out, and they're, I mean, they're nice, but you can, as I looked at their bid and what they paid, and there were more than where ours came in at, I was kind of shocked. But, yeah, all that stuff's expensive. So, we're trying to hit the main touristy areas, then we can expand it out as funding is available. But we'll always have that design.
Right.
We paid for that.
Donna, do you have any more questions for Mr. Henderson? Is this something that we might need to look further into, you know, step back? I know I do have a motion by Derek, but I don't have a second. Is this something that we're a little uncertain on, or?
I just want to reiterate, as long as you all, the staff, are comfortable with this, I'm okay with the motion.
And from my perspective, there's no question that the signage will add a lot, be nice, is something that we need. But again, I'm just staggered by the price of this.
Well, it ain't going to get no cheaper.
No, you're right.
I mean, the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost. I mean, that's, the metal's going to go up.
Yeah, but on the upside is, the upside is, if you go around, I've traveled a lot of places in southwest Virginia all over, and the wayfinding signage is the one thing we just don't have. We've got, I mean, we've got stuff that other places would dream. We've got, I mean, we've got stuff that other places would, would dream about, and it's the one little piece we don't have. We'll get there, and this is, this'll get us substantially on the way. And then the majority of the touristy areas will already, will have them, and so, I think it will help unify the, the appearance of downtown, so, in this sort of area.
Well, as I say, I struggled with the price of it to, to some extent, but I'm gonna second Derek's motion.
Thank you.
So, I have a motion by Derek Webb, and that's gonna be seconded by Vice Mayor Wayne Austin. Any discussion? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Mr. Webb?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin?
Aye.
And Mary Anderson?
Aye.
Now, we're moving on to new business, and that's gonna be a request for the final plot approval for Major Subdivision to replot Lot Two, Plot Book Eighty-Eight, Page Ninety-three, Town Center of Abning LLC, parcel number zero-two-zero-dash-one-two-dash-five. Mr. Gabe, Christopher, step forward, please.
I think you just need a motion, man.
I know that Gabe has explained that to us earlier. Does any one of council have any other questions for Gabe, or anything that we need to talk to Gabe about?
I would just to put on the record that we did put this out for public noticing, as required by the state, and we had the signs and the property for everything, and we didn't receive any complaint, like any objection to any of this, so. I'd just like to add that since I did not add that the first time, so.
Thank you, Gabe. Do I have a motion for the request?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Mr. Webb?
Abstain.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin?
Aye.
And Mary Anderson?
Aye.
We have no old business for this evening. Uh, we do have a miscellaneous business and communications from our town manager, Mike Cochran. This is gonna be a consideration of the banner display permit requested for Washington County, Virginia, Master Gardens Association for the Garden Fair event, scheduled for April the eleventh and twelfth, with a banner display proposed from March thirty-first to April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Mr. Cochran, would you please address us with that?
Sure, as you know, we have the, the banner, uh, display policy, and, um, we created the list, but invariably, there are people that wanted to be on there that weren't on the initial list. Uh, and with that, we have, um, Ms. Susan Howard had, had contacted us regarding having a banner for the Master Gardens Association. They have an event called the Garden Fair, it's on April eleventh and twelfth, and, uh, she's out there. But the banner meets our criteria, has the town logo on it, and, uh, I think it's ready for print. It's just a matter of, uh, getting the approval, and it's just a two-day event, and it will be up, yeah, so it'll be up for two weeks, is the, is our proposal.
Starting March thirty-first, right?
March thirty-first through April thirteenth.
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion, we grant that approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Mr. Webb?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin?
Aye.
And Mary Anderson?
Aye.
And with that, we're gonna lead to council member reports.
Yeah, I just got one tiny bit.
Oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
I'm no council member, but...
Excuse me.
I used to play one on TV.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Sorry about that, Mr. Cochran.
Uh, yeah, no, no problem, yeah, I just wanted to mention, um, yeah, the January jams, uh, uh, came off good. I was just talking with Matt from the barter. Uh, as you know, we had something to do with Grandma Gatewood, uh, Gate, Gateway Gatewood, the play that just finished, that one. Uh, he said they were at seventy-eight percent full, uh, for, for both, for the nineteen showings that they had, which was decent, and he also received a lot of good feedback, and people in the community saying, wow, we're glad you had something in February, which was, uh, seventy, it was in Smith Theater, but that's a decent, decent showing. A couple of times I drove by here, and you could tell there was something going on.
I think seventy-eight's a great number.
Yeah, it really is.
It really is, considering. What's going on with the first of the year in the town of Abning, I think that's a great number.
For sure, and then with the, uh, with the, uh, January, uh, January jams, uh, obviously, we get our, uh, the receipts that come in from that come in, uh, delayed about three weeks. But by all accounts, uh, it was a, it was a really good month, as far as, um, meals and lodging and, uh, and things that are tourist-related, everything seemed to be up a pretty, pretty solid amount. And, uh, tourism has talked to some of the business owners and the restaurant owners, and, uh, and they've all seemed positive about it. Uh, we had, uh, overall, an increase in, in, you know, it was, it was a solid increase, month over month. And so, you know, it just, it was a decent thing. We're looking at it for next year to see what we may do differently, to see whether we want one show or two shows instead of, or, by all, all in all, it came up pretty solidly supported in the community. And I know you're in the restaurant business, you may have seen it as well.
I noticed that at my restaurant and at the tavern where I'm employed as well, we've seen, uh, a great influx of people coming through the doors, through the January jams. And I know that the one week that we had the, uh, snowstorm, it kinda slowed everything down, but we still had a lot of local people that were out mingling, and, uh, it seemed like that it was a, a very substantial amount of people that were out.
Yeah, 'cause our, uh, just for, uh, yeah, lodging in February, it was up, you know, fifty-three percent over the, over the, uh, the year before, which is pretty substantial.
How about the meals?
Uh, meals is only up a little over three, um, but, so it ebbs and flows. Uh, in some places, hadn't actually closed in January, uh, and, and we did have that awfully cold couple of days there in January. But by all and large, I mean, it was, uh, having looked at the revenues and, and sales that we, numbers that we get, it seemed to be a pretty positive impact, uh, on the community, and then the feedback we got was pretty solid, too, so.
Like I said, at my restaurant, Duane and Co., you know, price point, it's a little bit lower than some of the average restaurants in the town of Abning, and I can just say, through the whole week of the January jams, you know, we were fairly busy. You know, that was due to people going to the bars to see the January jams, so.
And absolutely, as, yeah, as you know, the reason we do this is to support our local businesses.
Yes, for sure.
'Cause, uh, you know, it certainly takes a lot of effort, but thankfully, we got great folks, Adam Bold and those over in tourism helped make it happen, so.
I was with Adam and Chad today, doing some things, and I think that Adam and Chad are both doing a, a great job over at the information center, so. If anybody doesn't know, those two guys are wonderful over there, and we've got Ms. Blackburn over there as well, too, and I think everyone is, is doing a great job for the town of Abning, so, I'll listen to them at the information center.
Great, yeah, and that's, uh, that's all I had for tonight, so.
That's all right. Councilman Derek Webb, have you got anything that you would like to add?
I had to think hard about it, no, I'm good right now.
Ms. Quinn?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I attended the Tourism Advisory Meeting, my first one, uh, this month, and I believe everybody knew that I was on the Tourism Board now, and we had like twenty-five, thirty people there, so.
Wonderful.
It's because I was there.
I hear ya, I see that.
I'm just kidding. Uh, but I do wanna report a couple of things. I told her from time to time, I wouldn't try to, uh, report everything at the council meeting, but, uh, you know, just throw a couple of things that's coming up. First of all, we had a ribbon cutting at Holston Mountain Artisans, they moved to Main Street, and there was a big turnout for that, and then they had the grand opening, too. Uh, so, we're, it's just a great addition to Main Street. And also, the visitor staff is working with the Virginia Educational Association, who will bring four hundred people to Abning for a two-day conference at the Higher Ed Center, and the staff will be working with them down there and, uh, providing that information, uh, all about Abning during the conference. And they're also, the Welcome Center is planning for a well-underway, uh, day for Independence Day celebration. Tourism staff is working to bring family-friendly activities and music to Remsberg Drive for families to enjoy prior to the fireworks display, so they're working on that, too.
I had a chance to talk to, to Adam and Chad both about that, and, uh, it seemed like they got a nice little lineup. I don't really want to tell everyone what we got going on yet, I just want everyone to come out and see what we got going on. So, uh, it seems like they have some pretty positive things for everyone for the Fourth of July.
Yeah, it'll be a lot of fun.
Be a lot of fun.
Pray for good weather.
And I did attend the ribbon cutting as well with Donna over at the Artisans, and I, I think we had a nice crowd there. Mike Cochran was there as well, and I think that everyone that's in the arts community, we had a, a really nice showing. There was a lot of people from the Arch Depot there, so I think that was a really good call, and I just hope, I wish them nothing but the best on Main Street with the Artisans. We are gonna miss them on Park Street, 'cause Park Street's kinda like my neighborhood, and they held their ground over there on Park Street over at the...
Yeah, and they've been here a long time.
They've been here for a while, so if anyone out there is, is looking to see where they're at, they are now on Main Street. Um, what was the address?
Two eighty West Main Street.
Two eighty West Main Street, so if you get a chance, please come out and check out the, the Artisans on Main Street. Vice Mayor Austin, do you have anything to add to council report?
Well, I'd like to, uh, report, of course, Mayor Anderson and I are both on the Veterans Advisory Board, and, uh, the veterans are currently in the planning stages for Memorial Wall up at the Veterans Park. They have, um, employed an architect to draw plans for it. It would be very similar, of course, much smaller in size, but to something like the Vietnam Memorial Wall up in Washington. And, uh, they're enthusiastic and excited about that, they're still in the planning stages, and once they get to the point where everything is finalized, they want to bring that to the council and get the town's consideration and approval for that. I think that'd be a very nice addition to the party.
Yes, sir. I know that me and Mike Cochran rode up there today, take a look at a couple of things that, uh, we need to look at up there, and like you said, I think that, that, that would be something that I'm eager to see. Like you said, I'm on the, the Veterans Board with you as well, I'm eager to see how things turn out with that.
That's all.
And I really don't have too much to say, 'cause basically, it's been kind of a slow month, but Donna kinda stole my thunder, and then Wayne Austin kinda stole my thunder as well, too. But, that just lets me know that, you know, we have a good council here, we have a good town manager here, everyone is involved, as much as they can be involved, and, um, you know, I'm really appreciative with the police chief. I had a couple incidents, um, this week that, that I had to reach out to the chief last week about. I think that some of those issues have been solved, I just wanna say thank you. I know we have some things that have come up, and I know that I'm really, uh, you've got all my praises, chief. You do a wonderful job, your people do a great job, and with the issues and the things that we have in front of us, I know that you're eager to tackle those as well, too, so, thank you and thank you to police force for everything y'all do for the town of Abning. All right, yes, sir. So, with that being said, we have some reappointments to boards and committees. I don't know if we're gonna go into closed session with that. I think, do you all want to go into closed session with that, or is that something that...
Well, we have five of them tonight, and I, I think it might be good to go into closed session and discuss these. So, I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session, so in Code of Virginia nineteen fifty is amended, Section two-point-two-dash-thirty-seven-eleven-A-one, for the purposes of considering applications for appointments or reappointments to the positions on Sinking Springs Cemetery, the Economic Development Authority, Recreation Advisory Committee, the Tree Commission, and/or Sustain Abning.
So, do I have a motion that we go into closed session?
I'll second that.
That was the motion.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Ms. Quetch, second.
All right, any discussion?
Do we have two closed sessions? Just out of curiosity, there's another one on the agenda there. Can we take both of those up in the same closed session, as opposed to having to come back out and come back in?
Yeah.
I think that would be okay, is that okay, Kim?
It's the same subsection that was drawn, so you're not...
Am I making your motion to include?
Yes, I would amend my motion to, well, it's under the same code section, it's A-one, yes. And it'll be for the purposes of a personnel matter involving the performance valuation or job assignment of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of this public body.
So, I had a motion, and I had a second. If there's no more discussion, Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Mr. Webb?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin?
Aye.
And Mary Anderson?
Aye.
And with that, we're going to go into closed session.
I'd like to make the motion that we move to come back into open session.
I'd make that motion. Did you, oh, I'm sorry, did you say?
Motion made by Derek Webb, seconded by Vice Mayor Wayne Austin. Any discussion? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Mr. Webb?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin?
Aye.
And Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
I'd like to ask that we certify that after reconvening in public session here, that the closed session that just concluded, nothing was discussed except the matter of matter specifically identified in the motion to convene in closed session and lawfully permitted to be discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in the motion.
Mr. Webb, do you so certify?
I so certify.
Ms. Quetch?
I so certify.
Vice Mayor Austin?
I so certify.
And Mayor Austin?
I so certify.
I'd like to make a motion that on the appointments that we went into closed session to discuss, that we reappoint Ken Ferris Luke to the Singing Springs Cemetery Committee, that we appoint Taryn Rosenbaum to the Economic Development Authority, that we appoint Stephanie Cox to the Recreation Advisory Committee, that we appoint Dylan Mantu to the Tree Commission, and that we appoint Bridget Pack to Sustain Abingdon.
That's seconded.
Any further discussion? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Mr. Webb?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin?
Aye.
And Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion that, that Summer Apostle, is that, did I pronounce that correctly? That she be removed from the Abingdon Arts Commission, unfortunately, due to her inability to attend the meetings as advised by the staff.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Mr. Webb?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin?
Aye.
And Mayor Anderson?
Aye. And with that, we'll call this meeting adjourned.